I was in a meeting, sorry. The health department might actually, they go to the health department, they should be checking with that.
Love and love a duck when we're having fun.
Just think of it as a sneeze guard. It's a sneeze guard. Mark, you got fleas.
He's here on his hand, remember? Which one is that?
Bob Ankers.
Who?
Reynolds.
Oh shit. April 12th, I still have to sue. Let me tell you something. Is this going to be coming out on Brad? That's what I should do. Senator Reynolds, that's not true.
I know, I know.
All I have to do is, there's nobody connected to the network.
I just tell these people that I'm terrible.
The county has done all those things. Ask the county about their four embezzlements. We're talking about control. They've had four embezzlements in the last three months. Embezzlement? We haven't had any embezzlements. We didn't wash no money, nobody stole. We didn't fund an account.
Mr. Mayor, we're starting without you.
Oh, excuse me, they want to start. Call the meeting, Dorton. Madam Secretary, let's see, somebody's got to do the pledge. Mr. George, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, like our God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see if I can do this by memory. May we observe a moment of silence? Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Heshev, Gustan, Zadra, Farazza, George, Azzie, Keshel.
Here. Approval of the minutes for March 16. Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Public comment, I have one public comment card. Did you want to speak, Mr. Markell? Markell, or would you rather talk next week?
I'm Ryer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Markell. Thank you very much, we appreciate you very much. Any other public comment? Close the public comment section, bring it back to the table. Adam, discussion potential direct to staff regarding proposed state legislation and other matters relating to... Oh, hello. The Carson City kids back with us.
Thanks for that introduction, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, for the record, Cadence Matievich, Legislative Relations Program Manager, here with your report for the eighth week of the legislative session. We are nearing the halfway mark in the session. We'll hit that halfway mark next week. And it's a very busy time at the legislature. We'll begin evening and weekend hearings next week. So far, 1,115 bills have been introduced. As I mentioned, last week, 238 bills were introduced last Monday. Another 228 bills were released this week. So we are reading through them fast and furiously, trying to assess potential impacts or benefits to us. And we'll be expecting to bring back a number of measures to you for your consideration next week. I do have about a dozen bills for you to consider today. I'll try and go through them quickly. Obviously, as I'm going along, if there's any questions, please stop me and I'll do my best to answer them.
We will try to.
I would also note that April 15th is the deadline for the first committee passage. So essentially, all of the bills that are now in play, with the exception of a few bills that are exempted from those deadlines, do have to be passed out of the first committee within the next two weeks. So as I said, it'll be a very busy two weeks. And then the following week after that, those bills that make it out of committee would have to be out of their first house. So a busy time for us. With that, I will get right into the items that I am bringing forward today. There are a couple of items within here that are generally more administrative items rather than policy items. But because I know that they are items that the council has substantial interest, I have brought those to you for opposition. And this first one is one of those items. It's Assembly Bill 363, brought forward by Assemblyman Ellison. And it revises provisions governing manufactured housing. It's enabling legislation that removes the requirement for a city or county building department to obtain written approval from the division before enforcing such regulations and conducting such inspections. This bill was actually heard this afternoon. We did testify in support of the bill. You know, anytime when we have the ability to do something without having to ask the state to do it, that's always a good thing. And we think that this does, in fact, further the efforts of the Shared Services Committee with our efforts with Washoe County in regards to sharing services and consolidation of building permit inspections. And so we did testify in support and would just seek to have the council confirm that position this afternoon.
And second...
Have a motion, second, discussion?
We had discussion, actually, about this at the Subcommittee of the Shared Services, the group that, of course, is doing the inspection and permitting. And you might recall when we gave you guys the briefing a week or so ago that this was something that we wanted to move forward with. So it's kind of coincidental, potentially. Maybe they got it when they saw the materials that we presented to them 10 days ago or so, so...
Yeah, I think, actually, in this particular case, it's a very nice coincidence. Councilwoman, Assemblyman Ellison was looking to address some issues within his community and found that, in fact, we were all experiencing them. So there was a good deal of support. In fact, the manufactured housing department at the state did come forward and also testify in support of the bill today, so...
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. AB 437.
AB 437 is a bill that's being brought forth by Assemblyman Daley. It increases the rate of assessment of property. It would increase the rate of assessment from 35% to 45% and would require local governments that receive these revenues to cause not less than half of any increase that we receive as a result of this revision in the percentage for capital improvement projects. I know, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Daley has contacted you on this bill, I believe. At this point, staff's recommendation on this is neutral. I will say that that's our recommendation because we would see a financial benefit from this. We would see additional revenues coming to the city but feel that it's really a council policy decision as to whether or not this council would be supportive of an increase in taxes in the current economy.
Can we build new buildings with it? Like if we wanted to build a new police station or a fire station?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we could.
So we could, we only have to use 50% of the 10% increase?
Correct.
I think we ought to support it. Discussion. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Heshev.
How do they calculate the increase? Because what happens if the taxable value goes down? The rate goes up by 10%. So how do they know what the incremental difference is, the measure of 50%?
They would attribute the increase to this percentage first. So even if the value went down, unless it went down more than 10%, in that case, it would come up and I think the cap would apply and that particular property owner wouldn't owe any additional taxes. Mr. Knutson, maybe you could help me out here, since you've...
So just by way of an example, let's say it was worth 100 grand last year. And now, and if it stayed 100 grand, the difference would be the 10%. So that could be easy calculated. But if it dropped 75 to $75,000, now you're applying 45% to 75,000 instead of 35 to 100. You're saying that they would, what little increase there might be in revenue, that would be allocated to the capital improvements fund first?
Yes, Councilman Heshev, I believe you're understanding that correctly.
Any other discussion, Mr. Azzie?
How is this going to affect the 3% increase per year?
It doesn't change the cap. You know, the 3% cap on residential properties, it's 8% on commercial properties, is still there. And so...
So how does this help anything?
In most cases, essentially, what it would do is let us get that 3% because in most cases, given the current market, the only growth that we were going to, that we would have would be from this increased assessment rate. And so we would be able to gain 3% of whatever that increase would be.
So would this equate equally, and this is always weird to me, how much they do 35% of 62, value of pi. Would this actually raise taxes then? By, it would be a 30% increase in taxes, right? Is that what it equates to?
28.6.
28.6?
Wait a minute, speak a little louder down here so they can hear you, please.
I was going to say, then if you've got, that's why I asked. I mean, it's interesting to me, how, when you add all the pieces to determine what the new revenue stream is going to be, how does that get calculated? Because Dave's right with the 3%. If you bump up against the cap, somehow they've got a, somebody's got to measure, there's got to be a formula to say, what revenue is really allocated to this 10% additional rate we're talking about? And now you're saying, it could be attributable to something else. But if they're saying those first dollars get allocated to this portion, now you've restricted half of them to capital improvements when we really could use those funds to keep firemen, policemen. I mean, I'd like to see how the formula actually works, assuming you've got caps and you've got decreases in taxable value, which we've seen over the last several years.
Councilman Heshev, we will try to bring that back for you. I will say that there is, that formula is not clear in the current text of the bill. I did meet with Assemblyman Daley this morning, earlier today. And he indicated that he's working on an amendment to the bill that would clarify that and put that formula in there so that, you know, his intent is really for that, to be sure that the first money goes to, is attributed to this increase and not to any other kind of increase. So at the point when we get that formula, it may be that based on the pace of things, we don't see that formula or that amendment until the day of the hearing.
Mr. Knutson.
I'd also like to add that the way the taxes work is your assessed valuation is what's capped to the 3% increase. This is the taxable assessed valuation, which is applied to your assessed valuation, so 35% of your total value. So if the cap holds you to a 3% increase, the increase of the 10% or the 28.6% and the difference between the two would be applied to that full amount. So it doesn't reduce the amount you would gain through this process if they don't change any of the other tax laws. It would just restrict the total growth.
Because the 35% now, 45% gets applied to the fair market value, which is the taxable value. And then the cap applies to the assessed value, which I thought was equal to 35% times taxable value.
Actually, it's a little bit different than that. The way it works is, is your market value is, say, 150,000. Your assessed valuation may be 100,000 based on the age of the house and what it used to be worth, including the abatements that you've received so far. And then the 35% is applied to that to get the taxable assessed valuation. So regardless of what happens with your market value up until a certain point, it has no impact whatsoever. Once the market value drops below your abated assessed value, then you'd see an actual decrease. But since the percentage is applied after that assessed valuation is made, the amount of money you would receive would be based on the total assessed valuation times 35% versus what it would be under this new law at 45%.
Because if you look at your tax bill, it shows the decrease in taxable value and that's what they apply the rate to.
Yes.
All right. It may be interesting to see how it works out in the formula.
Mr. Farazza.
Yeah, Cadence, what's the likelihood of passage on this? I mean, I think that's...
Again, Councilwoman, I hesitate. I think my crystal ball's a little fuzzy. But this, the bill has not been scheduled for a hearing. I will tell you that much. And I know that Assemblyman Daley has been working very hard to try and explain the bill. I don't know at this point how much support is out there. It's hard for me to gauge. I think, obviously, as I indicated, you know, the decision to raise taxes in this economy is one that I think, you know, a lot of people struggle with. And the legislature as a whole has a number of things to work through with their entire budget package that ultimately, this might be a component of it. But in and of itself independently, it's hard for me to say that it's got a ton of momentum right now.
So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, based on that, can we get the information first on the formula before we take a position?
I'd like to stay, well, I said I'd support it, I will support it, but I want to stay neutral till we get all these answers. And then we'll bring it back to council for direction.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to stay neutral at least at the maximum right now because 28.6%, it's still, that's a hefty increase.
Yes, it is.
And let's see what the formula looks like. But I'd say neutral at best.
Give me a motion to that.
Recommend that the council on AB 437 take a neutral position at this time.
Till we get the facts. Motion, second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. AB 468?
AB 468 is an Assembly Government Affairs Committee bill. It revises provisions relating to redevelopment. The bill has several different components. It would require each redevelopment agency in the state to establish a citizens advisory committee. We do have questions with the language in the bill as to whether or not we would be required to establish such a committee for each of our redevelopment areas or if it would simply be one advisory committee to the agency itself. So we are seeking to have that clarified. The citizens advisory committee, in either case, would be required to review any proposed redevelopment project estimated to require expenditures in excess of $100,000 and to review any redevelopment plans or amendment to such plans. I have communicated to the chairwoman of this committee that we, in fact, do have such a committee already, our RAB. And so, you know, looking again to get that clarified, that we would not be required to create an additional body and hoping that she will look favorably upon that clarification. Further, it authorizes a redevelopment agency to loan money for the purchase of land and construction of buildings, facilities, structures, and other improvements under certain circumstances. It requires an agency to file an annual report with the Committee on Local Government Finance that includes certain information. We have communicated to the chairwoman of the committee on this item that much of the information that they are requesting in this report is already included in our CAFR. And so we have requested to see if she would be open to us simply providing the information from our CAFR rather than creating an entirely new reporting requirement. There are some additional reports, copies of contracts that she's asked for. And we are seeking to clarify with her that she does, in fact, want those volumes and reams of paper every year.
Who is this?
Assemblywoman Kirkpatrick. In addition to that, it increases the redevelopment set aside from 15% to 18%. Requires that half of that 18% be used for affordable housing and half of that 18% be used for educational facilities. At this point, staff's recommendation on this bill is to monitor. As I said, we have a number of provisions that we are looking to have clarified. And upon clarification of that, feel that we would be in a better position to recommend a formal position on this bill. I will say, on that 18%, that set aside is subordinate to any existing obligations to the agency. So the likelihood, unfortunately for us, that there will be any additional projects and funds are low. And so, in all practicality, this may not, may not ever have realistic applications for our agency.
Cadence, what's our current set aside for RDA 2? Because we do have a provision for affordable housing in there now, under the mandate.
Councilwoman, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if the interim city manager knows. We could certainly get that information here. Of course, Maureen knows the answer.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, that's 15%.
So, and we're doing that, correct?
We have been doing that, yes. We have been making that set aside.
Okay.
I do not know what that number is right now. I know what it's been in the past.
Yeah, and so that's mandated already under the NRS? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, motion? To continue to monitor? Okay, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. AB 471?
Assembly Bill 471 is another Assembly Government Affairs Committee bill. I think Councilwoman Farazza had gotten a heads up on this particular bill. It revises provisions relating to enterprise funds and would prohibit a local governing body from transferring any money from an enterprise fund, any money collected from fees imposed for the purpose which an enterprise fund was created, or any income or interest earned on money in the enterprise fund to any fund that is unrelated to the purpose for which the enterprise fund was created or to the general fund. I will point out that this bill has a very severe penalty for violation of those provisions, that any one officer employee that's found to have violated the provisions is guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction ceases to hold their job. And so based on the severity of those penalties, staff's recommendation at this point would be to oppose. But certainly, it's a policy level decision for the council. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Does this apply if the state comes and takes money from an enterprise fund? Would they be guilty of this? I'm sure, wouldn't they be? If the way it's written, maybe I would support it.
Councilman Azzie, I don't believe that the language would lend to that. I believe that it speaks specifically to the governing body of the local government.
So they can still take it if they want to. And they're not guilty of a misdemeanor. But if we take it to use it for something, we're guilty of a misdemeanor.
Whose bill is this?
This, again, is Assembly Government Affairs, which Assemblywoman Kirkpatrick chairs.
Well, what's the intent here?
Councilman Heshev, I think that this has some history in southern Nevada. Some things that happened in north Las Vegas, possibly.
So, for example, if the sewer enterprise fund wanted to make a loan to redevelopment, if that would occur, that person would be guilty of a misdemeanor?
Correct.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Discussion, can we have a discussion?
Okay, we can have a discussion.
Yeah, actually, I support what's in this bill and I think it's got a lot of traction down there. I think the loaning or transferring money from the enterprise funds and the enterprise funds were set up to do specific things. I do have some issues, Mr. Mayor, with the bill where it's guilty of a misdemeanor. I mean, I think she can incorporate this because right now, those loans have to be approved by the Department of Taxation. So I think there can be some modification in this language where I'd be comfortable supporting the bill because they have to sign off on that anyway. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the bill itself, just that provision, the last sentence in there. I think it's up to the state whether we're allowed to transfer those funds or not. So I think it could be amended to reflect that.
Personally, I think I oppose it now until we get those corrections. Any other, Mr. George?
Yeah, I mean, I, there's other reasons I oppose this too. And, you know, really, it's taken the control out of our hands. I mean, they're stepping in and saying, telling us, dictating to us how we run our city. And I agree with Jessica that, you know, we can go now and ask for those. But I just think it's wrong on so many levels.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, plus, we've transferred money from the general fund to the enterprise fund.
Yep.
So why isn't that some kind of, why is it one way is a misdemeanor but the other way isn't? Going the other direction, so I'm opposed to it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, all in favor of it, say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
So the vote's 6-1. Senate Bill 257?
Senate Bill 257 is a bill from Senator Weiner. And this relates to provisions governing graffiti offenses. This bill actually was heard yesterday morning. It got a great deal of support. We did sign in on support on this bill. And what this does, existing law allows for penalties for graffiti offenses based on the value of the loss being $5,000 or more. This revises that provision and requires aggregation to $250. So a significant lowering of the threshold for which penalties can be imposed for graffiti and would allow the courts to order any person convicted to clean up, repair, and/or replace the damaged property and keep such property or another property, specified property, free of graffiti for up to one year. There are some other provisions relating to counseling and some other items. As I indicated, the bill did receive quite a bit of support. I understand that some of our neighborhood advisory members were made aware of the bill and expressed support to the legislators on this item. And at this time, staff's recommendation would be that the council adopt a formal position of support for the bill.
Move to support?
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Senate Bill 304?
Senate Bill 304 is Senator Leslie's bill relating to redistricting of election districts in Carson City, the cities of Henderson, Reno's, and Sparks contingent upon voter approval. This is the bill that we discussed a little bit at your last meeting. The bill itself would, in fact, amend our charter. And there are provisions of the bill that say that those charter amendments would only be enacted upon an affirmative vote by the voters in our city. And the ballot question that they've placed in the bill language or says it should be substantially the following form is, "Shall the Charter of the City of Reno be amended to provide for award system for the election of council members?"
to provide for a ward system for the election of council members, providing that each council member must be elected in a general election by only the registered voters of the ward that he or she seeks to represent?" The charter amendments would also eliminate the at-large position on our council and would require us to establish a sixth ward. Any council member who is holding, and we would have to put that on the ballot in 2012, if the response from the voters was affirmative, the changes to our charter would go into effect in 2013. There would be no further action by the legislature to approve those charter changes if, in fact, the vote is affirmative. The member of the council who, for our practical purposes, would have been elected into the at-large position in the 2012 election will continue to hold that office through the term, but from 2013 forward, that representative would represent Ward Six. They would not represent the city at large. And the charters of Carson City, Henderson, and Sparks would also be amended by this bill. I know that last week, when we had some initial discussion about it, there was some indication from the council that you were not opposed necessarily to placing this item on the ballot. I would say that, at this point, staff is recommending a neutral position because this bill does amend the charters of the other cities, and I don't know that we would want to go in and advocate a position of support for a bill that would change another city's charter if, in fact, they don't desire for that to be the case. So, with that, I would seek direction from the council if you are supportive of the provisions that specifically relate to the city of Reno, but overall, would recommend a neutral position on the bill.
Comments? Mr. George?
Yeah, I'm opposed to the bill. Again, why would the legislature dictate to us what we need to put on the ballot for the city of Reno? And why would they be dictating to us how we would want to propose our wards and makeup of this council to look like? You know, we talk a lot about home rule, yet it seems like a lot of the things that are going on down there are exactly the opposite. And I think they've got much more trying things to worry about down there than the makeup of this council and telling us how and what we need to put on the ballot. So, I'm opposed to it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so, this language, to me, the way they've crafted the language, it's going to be voted exactly the way, it seems to be that the language was crafted in a way where someone would vote yes. I mean, if they put language in there and would say, "But under the current system, you have the right to vote for all of your members on the city council, particularly if, you know, you don't like what they did in your ward, for example," you'd get a different result, I would think, because it makes it sound like they're not able to vote for us right now, and it just seems that it predetermines the outcome. I think if most people knew that they can vote for anybody up here, no matter where they live in the city, they would prefer that, and that option's not given to them in this language.
You are correct, Councilman Housechiff. It is not. I mean, it dictates that the question must be substantially the same form.
Right.
I wouldn't note that we have an opportunity, if we so desire, to craft our own question and request that that replace this question if we feel that we could draft a question that...
Can't we draft our own question today? Do we need the legislature to dictate to us to do that?
No. Yes, Councilman George, we can craft our own question today.
Councilwoman Zadri.
Kayden, this would go into effect if it had the affirmative vote in 13.
Correct.
Our at-large seat for the city of Reno will be up in 12. So, theoretically, the person who wins that seat could live in the extreme north part of the city, and Ward Six, when it's created, could be in the extreme south part of the city. So, the person who would be representing that only area would be not living in the area, which is already required by state law. They're continuing to say it needs to be required, but the way this language is written, that individual wouldn't need to be for at least three years. And did I understand you right? It is for the full term. They wouldn't have to run in the very next election like an appointed position would have to.
Yes, Councilwoman Zadri, your understanding of the bill language is correct, and they would serve their full four-year term. It is certainly very possible, if not probable, that for the majority of the term, the representative may live in a different ward than the one that they are representing.
Councilwoman Farazza?
Yeah, actually, I don't have a problem going to the voters. I just think that, because I think it's a good time to do it because all of us are theoretically termed out. We've all been elected for a third term, so to go out and ask the voters which structure they prefer in electing their council members. I do agree with Councilman Housechiff as far as, I think, the way the question is worded now, it doesn't explain to the public how we're elected currently. So, I think I would be in favor of going out to the voters, but I think that we should have input on the way that that question is structured to go out. Should it be the wards? Should it be, you know, citywide? But I think the question itself needs to be modified so people know what they're really voting for.
Understood.
Any other comments? Councilman Ayazi?
Legally, do we, aren't you, when you put something on the ballot, do you have to have a group that makes the, would this be able to usurp that, that makes the question? Is it usually the council that makes the question? I know you've got to go out and get a committee that has the pros and the cons and the this and the that. Does this delve into that level of detail?
Councilman Ayazi, I don't recall seeing any language directing that we use a different process than our normal process in the bill. I could ask, you know, what we, typically, the way that that works is we submit names, I think, to the, not thinking at the county who run the elections for us, not thinking at the name of that office right now, and those are independent panels, the pro and con committees that write the arguments. I didn't see anything in the bill language. I can look at it again, but I don't believe that there was anything speaking to how the pro and con committees would be created in these cases, since, yeah, it is kind of an unusual thing where we're putting a ballot question, we would be required to put a ballot question on that we weren't necessarily initiating ourselves. So, I can see clarification on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm opposed to this bill either. I don't know if there's any tweaking that we'd want to do for the question, what the question would be, and I think that Councilman Zadri brings up a really good point about, what if that person doesn't live in that ward? What actually happens then? Are they going to make an exception for that? Because in other parts of state law, you have to live in your ward.
Councilman Ayazi, my understanding is that the language here that says that they retain that term in the legislative intent is intended to supersede that. We could get that on the record during the hearing.
But does that also mean they could run for reelection and be outside that?
No, sir. I don't believe that it does.
Those are the kind of things I think we'd like to clarify, is could that person then run for two more terms outside of that district? So, those would be interesting to me, and if somebody has some changes to what the question would be. Because my complaint about Senator Leslie was she was going to go just do this to us without asking for the voters, so, at least by asking the voters, it's not...
[inaudible]
I'm not okay with it, but they could do it. She could, they could just, if she can get the bill passed.
We can oppose it.
If she can get the bill passed, she can just say, "You're going to six wards right now."
We can oppose it and ask the governor to veto it.
Right, we can do that, too.
I mean, that's my position.
But maybe it's time to go out. I mean...
I'm not, I don't, then we can have that discussion here amongst us.
I think your point's well taken. In the past, the pros and the cons helped draft the question. That, to me, by, why else would you want your own language in the bill unless you wanted to preempt the right of local government and the pros and cons committee to actually form the question?
Right.
It's a preemptive strike, and that's the part, I don't mind going out and asking the voters, but don't tell us how to write the question, particularly, the way this question is written, it's exactly what the sponsor wanted the last time. She wanted to have a bill without the voters that basically eliminated voters to be able to vote for their councilperson, every one of us at the table, and she wanted to do it only by district. And that's what this language, this is what this question predetermines. So, I'm okay with it as long as we draft the question.
Move to oppose? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second for discussion.
Was that, would we oppose it unless we get some modifications, or just oppose it outright?
If they want to make some modifications and bring it back to us and let us take a look at it, I'll look at it again. I don't think I'll ever support it.
I think that's the question, though, is do we want staff to work with them and try to put some modifications in? Just opposing it, we're not allowing them to do that, but we'll oppose...
I still think the bill is wrong. I think them dictating to us to put something on the ballot that has to do with local elections is wrong.
Yeah, but Dave's point...
So philosophically, I'm opposed to it. I mean, I might not have four of us here that are opposed, but philosophically, I'm opposed to it.
I share Dave's view, which means it's probably going to happen to us, so instead of letting him...
Well, I don't, if we oppose it, I don't think it will. I think the governor will veto it.
What's the other city's doing, by the way? Are they taking a position of opposition?
Councilman Housechiff, I think that they're all kind of in a similar position that we are in that this bill language has just been out for a little while. I don't know that any of them have adopted formal positions yet. I think that City of Sparks will be considering this. They have an internal, kind of a subcommittee that will consider this, so I don't know what the other local government...
They have a charter committee, correct?
They do.
We used to have one, right? We don't have, you don't know that?
I don't know.
We did.
I would rather sit down with the sponsor and see if we can put in language that is, that presents both sides.
Well, let's vote on this, because I'm not going to support it. I'd rather be neutral until we have further clarification, and if it's not acceptable, then I'd oppose it.
Councilman Housechiff, if I may, given the timeline and how quickly things are moving and impending committee deadline, would perhaps the things, the two positions to be considering at this time that I think would be helpful from a staff perspective is, are we opposed to the bill on principle? Or would we support the bill if it's amended to clarify the issues that were addressed today of whether or not a person in that seat that's living outside of the ward would be able to seek reelection? That we have input on the language of the question. So, I don't know if that helps, but that the position would be opposed to the bill, or if indeed, the position would be to support it if it's amended.
Okay, we have a question. Any further comment?
I just, I would reiterate that we've been, this council has been talking about home rule, the need for a home rule, for longer than even I've served at the council, and this is absolutely chipping away, once again, at our opportunity to do what's right for our citizens, and we absolutely can and should ask them how they'd like to elect us. But that's our duty and our responsibility, not the state's, to represent our local citizens.
Can we hear this? I don't know if the mayor's going to be coming back out here or not, but can we wait till?
Sure.
Because I have a feeling it's a 3-3 vote right now. Oh, I'm not sure where he's coming from on this.
Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
We are on Senate Bill 304.
This is Sheila Leslie's bill.
The bill about determining the vote within each ward to elect the councilpeople and going to the, on the ballot on the 12th, 12th, in 2012, and see what the citizens say, and then if the at-large seat were eliminated, you'd have a sixth ward, and there's some questions raised by various councilpeople, how would that affect the person if they didn't live in that ward? Would they be able to run for reelection in 2016 if they're elected, if they didn't live in that ward? And there's some other questions going on, and there's a motion on the floor right now to oppose the bill with a second, but there's been much discussion on this, and it's pretty divided among the councilpeople.
Mr. George?
He's the one who made the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, in my opinion on it is, you know, we...
Well, are they just going to vote on things in their ward? They won't vote citywide?
Correct.
Correct.
They only vote for things in their ward?
Yes, sir.
No, no, no.
Well...
They vote citywide.
They're only elected from people in their ward.
They're only elected by the residents of their ward. It would eliminate the at-large position, create a sixth ward, and then the members of the council would be elected by the residents in their ward at both the primary and the general election.
Does the mayor still run citywide?
Yes.
Not that I'm running.
Yeah, really, it comes down to this, Mr. Mayor, the, either we oppose the bill as written, or we take a position of neutrality, I guess, until the sponsor clarifies the questions that were asked at the table, and then at that point, we decide whether we would oppose the bill.
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, my opinion on it is, I think we need to take a position of opposition, and this comes down to more of, you know, we keep talking about home rule, and then we get a bill like this introduced that is the exact opposite of home rule, legislature telling us what we have to put on a local ballot dealing with local elections. And I think that's been, I think that's been the discussion at the table, is some members do feel like we could get her to amend this and change it, but to make it more palatable, but the overall issue, in my opinion, is, should the legislature be dictating this to us? I think they've got other issues that they need to deal with, aside from how we elect the local elected officials. And the position I said that we could take is a position of opposition. I think some of the council members mentioned that they think that the sponsor can get this through, but I would rather us have a position of opposition and ask the governor to veto it if it was necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't said before, but my position on this is, I think that anybody that's elected should be elected from, as many, many people as are out there have the opportunity to vote on the person. I don't think it'd be restricted to the ward. I think we're all sensitive. We have NABs. We're all sensitive to people in our ward, and I think the election should be open to the maximum amount of voters who want to vote a person in or out.
Well, they vote on everything citywide right now, but they...
But I think what happens, Mr. Mayor, it goes on the ballot for the voters to decide.
That's correct.
And the concerns we had is the way Sheila structured the question, at least to me, tends to have the voter vote to just eliminate the right of the citizen to vote for all of us at the table. But if, in my opinion, if the question is properly drafted, I think most people in this community would want to vote for all of us up here, not just the ward, not just the councilperson in that particular district.
And so, your motion was in opposition?
To oppose.
To oppose.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dwight, let me ask you a question. When it comes down to asking the governor, which I think we might go and ask him to veto a lot of bills, is this the one we want to shoot our powder over? That's what, I mean, this is politics, so is this the one that we're going to ask him to really go to the mat and veto this bill if it passes?
Well, I mean, I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, how do we tell them we want home rule and then go and...
Support something that takes it away.
Exactly. I mean, we're talking out of both sides of our face. I mean, we either are, or we don't. We either support home rule, or we don't. I mean, do you?
I think the deeper question is, do you want the voters to decide? You know, she's deciding that she wants to decide, and we're deciding that we want to decide, and I think if the question is properly drafted, we'll let the voters decide. And if the voters in this community want to vote for councilmembers simply from that district, then so be it, but I don't think that's going to be the result if the question's properly drafted.
I completely agree with you, Pierre, but I don't think they should be dictating to us. It comes back to the question of, do we want the legislature dictating to us how this is done? And again, she tried to amend this bill in the last session, the same manner, after it got beat, when she just tried to push it through. She tried to amend it in the same manner last time, and the Republicans killed it.
Well, she wanted it mandated last time.
Well, but she amended it to have this exact language, to take it to the voters last time. She started out with a mandate, and then she amended it after, got the opposition, she amended it to make it to go to the voters, and it still got beat.
Yeah. The question is, is she going to see the same opposition at the legislature now that she's giving the right to the voters to make the decision, as opposed to mandating it? So, it's been discussed, so...
We'll call for the question.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
That. I said that. No, I didn't. I was aye on the first time. Sorry about that.
So, carries.
So, what is it?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Motion carries to you.
No, I vote in favor. I agree with Dwight. We either say we're for home rule or we don't.
So, just two of us?
Five, two in favor of opposing the bill. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor. SB 342 is the next one.
SB 342. SB 342.
SB 342. The primary sponsor for this bill is Senator Roberson, and all of the other Republicans in the Senate have signed on to the bill. It revises provisions relating to collective bargaining between local governments and employees. It has a couple of different components. Would require public notice of the initial and final offers made by each party during negotiation, mediation, fact-finding, and arbitration. Required that any final resolution reached in negotiation, mediation, fact-finding, or arbitration to be retroactive to the expiration date of the previous contract between the parties, and prohibits the parties, the mediator, the fact-finder, or the arbitrator from changing the effective date. Under existing law, local government employees in supervisory and administrative positions are required to be members of a different bargaining unit from their, from the employees that they supervise. This bill excludes all school administrators, heads of departments of local governments, administrative employees, and supervisory employees from being members of bargaining units. Also, under existing law, local government employers are required to negotiate with a recognized employee organization regarding the deduction of dues for the employees. The bill removes such negotiation from the scope of mandatory bargaining and authorizes local government employees to decide whether or not to have the dues deducted by the employer or not. At this point, staff's recommendation, excuse me, would be supportive of the bill in light of policy direction, previous policy direction from the council.
Second?
In favor, say aye. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the bill. I think the bill goes too far. I think it is a union-busting bill. I mean, to say, on one hand, we're saying that we don't want the legislature to come in. On the other hand, we're saying that certain employees can't be members of a collective bargaining unit. Isn't that, that's their right to organize. I mean, if they want to be part of a, represented by a union, I believe the employee should have a right to do that. Also, I think the fourth component is that, again, under the, the deduction of dues, I mean, an employee has the right to join or not to join and still be represented and not have to pay those dues. So I think this bill goes too, too far, quite frankly. So I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I thought, once you, once you belong to a collective bargaining unit, you have to pay the dues. It's still voluntary?
I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
But that if you are paying dues, that they have to be deducted. If you have decided to pay dues, that they must be deducted from your paycheck. This would remove that from the scope of mandatory bargaining and let the employee decide if they are paying dues, whether they would submit them, remit them directly, or if they would be deducted from their paycheck.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Six-one. 343.
343. Again, the primary sponsor, Senator Roberson, and Senators Hallseth and Sattlemeyer have signed on to this bill. This bill also, and I apologize, it looks like the title's missing in your staff report. This also relates to collective bargaining between local government employers and their employees. It removes from the negotiation process the option of final and binding fact-finding for disputes between local government employers and employee organizations that represent local government employees other than police and firefighters. Instead, if the parties do not reach an agreement after receiving a report from a fact-finder providing findings and recommendations, the governing body of the local government employer may, at a public hearing, impose the economic conditions of their most recent offer. Staff does have some concerns with the bill language and what would be considered economic conditions of the offer, and so we would be seeking to have that legislative intent clarified, and that is why, at this point, the staff's recommendation would be to support if amended, because we think if that's not clarified, we could have a whole lot of discussion about that moving forward. Additionally, that if, if that provision were enacted and the local government employer imposed those economic conditions, that, that imposition would be final and binding on the parties for the following fiscal year. In the case of police and firefighters, the bill removes the option of binding fact-finding and instead requires that they go, if after fact-finding they don't reach an agreement, it automatically goes to binding arbitration.
That's what it says now, isn't it? We go to binding arbitration. Are they excluding firemen and policemen from this?
No, Mr. Mayor. I believe, and maybe the interim city manager can help me out here, that there are some additional intermediate steps between an initial fact-finding. I think you can go to mediation and binding fact-finding. It eliminates all those middle steps and says if you don't agree after the first fact-finding expedition, then you go straight to binding arbitration. So it wouldn't, it would shorten the process. Maybe Renee can, I may not have been entirely right there, so she can help.
Renee Rogers, Director of Human Resources. Cadence was fairly close, but mediation is not required. It's a step that the parties can agree to before fact-finding. Fact-finding is advisory unless agreed to upfront, that it's going to be binding. One of the concerns, I think, with this bill is that it skips fact-finding for public safety and goes directly to binding arbitration. And I think we've had discussions before that, and I think even in our bill that the City of Reno has proposed, is that we have binding fact-finding and not binding arbitration, as fact-finding is submitted issue by issue and arbitration is package by package.
I guess the Reader's Digest called it. Councilwoman Sforza?
Yeah, and Cadence, the, why would they treat employees differently?
They're treated differently currently under the statute. Police and Fire are the only groups that are entitled to binding arbitration.
I understand that, but if they're, I mean, the intent of the bill is to have the, my understanding, to have those final proposals, which I actually support, if we're in pass and having those final proposals come before the public, not, not the actual negotiations. But this would-
Councilwoman, let me stop you. That was the last bill. This bill doesn't have those provisions in it. This just deals with the provisions of, of the dispute resolution.
Okay, so Cadence, explain to me how this is different than what we do now.
This bill allows for the elected body to impose a settlement on employees who are not police and fire. That is currently not in Nevada law. The elected body cannot impose a settlement or a resol, it's not a settlement, it's a resolution.
But what does that mean exactly? So Renee, give me an example.
For example, the council could say, we're not going to give any wage increase, and we're going to take, you know, a certain benefit away. And the council could vote by the majority to say that's the way the contract is going to be for the next year, instead of going through a dispute resolution process, which is currently what's in, in the law, being either fact-finding or arbitration, depending on if you're public safety or general employees.
So you could take, essentially take out any benefits without negotiating?
Well, essentially, you're supposed to negotiate, but if you can't reach an agreement, yes, that, that would be the end result. Yes, the elected body could do that.
So the elected body becomes its own arbitrator?
Yes, essentially, that's correct.
But isn't it, I'm sorry, isn't it limited to you have to demonstrate that there's some kind of economic conditions, right? I can't do that arbitrarily under this bill. I would have to show good reason before I could-
I don't know if the bill clarifies that or not.
Councilman House, Jeff, my understanding in reading the bill is that if after fact-finding we do not come to an agreement, that essentially, the package that we had on the table for the fact-finder, that's what would be imposed. And, and I think, again, that's where we're looking for that clarifying language on what the economic conditions mean.
Right.
We, we, you know, we think that what their intent is, is to say, okay, if you, if you go to, if you go to fact-finding, you don't, you don't come out of it with an agreement, then, then essentially, what, what the local government went in with is what you come out with, if the council decides by resolution that that's what you're going to have, and you have it only for the next fiscal year.
So I guess you need to get clarification, because it, it seems to me there's some checks and balances here. I can't just arbitrarily put something ridiculous on the table in fact-finding, and of course, the union would reject it, which they should, and then I can impose those same conditions on them? So I don't think the bill author had that in mind.
I'm, I'm certain the bill author didn't have that in mind, but, yeah, again, and that's where we would seek to, to get that clarification.
Councilman Asay?
I guess my question, and you can't answer this, but if, if we're trying to be fair to all, all the people who are, all the workers, why do we treat one group different than another? That's, that to me is what's interesting, is why do some groups get, I don't even know which ones are fairer than the other one, but why wouldn't they all be the same?
Councilman Asay, if I understand the legislative history correctly, many years ago, in deliberation of legislation, there was an agreement reached with public safety groups about the right to strike, and that they were, in return for agreeing to the provisions being enrolled in Chapter 288, that they do not have the right to strike, that they were granted binding arbitration.
Can other groups strike? I thought no one could strike.
No.
So, we could, we could fix this problem if we wanted to, this legislative session, and make the rights equal to all the workers in Nevada.
We could.
If we choose to.
The, the section that relates to binding arbitration and the sections, the section of NRS 288 that relates to binding arbitration and the section that relates to the right to strike are separate sections. My understanding is, again, a long time ago, it was a negotiation. They were enrolled, you know, they were, they were put into the law separately, but that they were part of a package.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess the other comment would be, would we support it if, if staff got further clarification or we stay neutral? And then, and then, I guess our bill required binding fact-finding, not binding arbitration, correct? So we could do item by item as opposed to kind of an all or nothing.
Correct, Councilman. Our, our, our bill eliminates binding arbitration.
So, we want to recommend that to the, to the author?
I mean, staff's recommendation is to support this with amendments. So, and I'm comfortable with that. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second the motion if they're willing to make those changes.
Further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five-one. Okay, SB 360.
SB 360. The primary sponsor on this is Senator Horford. There are a number of other legislators who have signed on to this legislation. This also has to do with redevelopment agencies requiring any employment plans that must be submitted for developments in excess of $100,000 to include information about the preference for hiring persons living within the redevelopment area used by the developer and employers that will be relocating businesses into the area. The bill does exempt public agencies that use redevelopment funds for, for public work from being required to submit an employment plan. So if, if we were doing it, we would not have to submit the plan. It requires an agency that proposes to provide an incentive to a developer to withhold 10% of the incentive unless certain conditions are met. Those conditions are spelled out in the reports. It's that 15% of the employees of contractors, subcontractors, vendors, and suppliers of the developer must reside within the redevelopment agency, redevelopment area, excuse me. 15% of the jobs created by employers as a result of the redevelopment project are filled by residents of the redevelopment area. The developer or build-to-suit owner or lessy complies with the requirements in the employment plan, and finally, that the developer satisfies the reporting required by the bill. Further, it would require a developer that receives an incentive of more than $100,000 to provide a report that shows the outreach efforts that the developer undertook, their bondings and lines of credit, and the execution of the redevelopment, including the, the plan and scope of services. You know, I think this bill is very much crafted towards, towards Southern Nevada, and probably has some unintended consequences for us. Again, as I mentioned, on the other, on the other bill pertaining to redevelopment agency, you know, given our current situation, I don't know that we're going to be undertaking any new projects, and so based on that, I don't know what our, what our level of concern with, with the language is. At this point, staff's recommendation would be to monitor it, and certainly, we can, we can work with the bill sponsor and express concern, I think, for us within our redevelopment areas. Meeting those thresholds for employment within the districts could prove to be very difficult.
Would this apply to any, anyone who's continuing to get incentives?
No, Councilman, it's for new projects.
Yeah, but what's a new project?
Yeah.
What if the same developer's been here for eight years, does something new across the street?
Yeah, that's a good question, Councilman House. Jeff, I will have to get clarification on that.
Or if, or if their existing deal is reworked, is that considered a new project?
Right.
And I'm not sure if, I mean, let's take baseball, for example. I don't know if they could possibly get 15% of their employees or contractors in the redevelopment district. So this would require us to withhold 10% of the money. It doesn't say if they don't meet the plans, you give it back to them.
Correct.
So I don't know how, in, in Reno, anyway, I don't know how we would meet this threshold on anything, because we don't have that many people living in the redevelopment districts.
Plus, how do you define incentive? Amazing cash? I mean, if, if, if he got his plans pushed through, because of timing issues, pushed through the building department so he could meet certain deadlines, is that an incentive? Plus, the way I read this is, what if it costs more to meet these requirements? Then you're imposing, I mean, we, we've had that happen in projects.
I don't think they care, Councilman House.
I know. You have to go outside the area just to get somebody that has that kind of specialty, you know, to build a certain thing in a baseball stadium, and there was nobody here locally to provide that.
I, I think the intent of the bill is not to make it, is not to address the difficulty of it. It's, it's to have the employees be from within the district.
For some of the same reasons as I stated on that earlier bill, guarding home rule, I would oppose this one.
I think there's some, some well-intended ingredients, but I, I had the same example in my mind that Councilman Asay had, when I was, when you were reading it, Cadence, that what if it was the ballpark and looking at that area? I, I don't know how you would, how you would do it. I think it, I, I, I think the intent is progressive in moving forward, but I, I would prefer to not oppose it, but to monitor it.
I'm okay with that. I, I think you, you've heard the concerns. I mean, they really need to do some clarification about what's a project, what's an incentive, and what if it costs more to meet the requirements? Who's going to wind up paying for it?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, certainly, as we discuss this with them, there would be the, there, there's always the possibility or potential to ask, just to have us amend it out, to have the population cap put in here and have it just apply in Southern Nevada. That, that would be an option that we could pursue. And again, you know, if, if the council's position of opposition is, is one of principle based on home rule, then certainly, you know, that argument goes out the window. But if, if really our concerns are, are practicalities for us in, in executing against these requirements, we could seek to be amended out of the bill.
I think what the bill sponsor has, it, it did come from Southern Nevada, I think, with East Street and, and the issue with a redevelopment agency down there with a minority community and some funding that was essentially being taken away. So I think what this bill's trying to do is encourage employment within that redevelopment district. So I think the premise behind the bill is a good one for outreach. I just think we need clarification on, on certain things, how, how it would be done.
And maybe also, because that does make sense, what you say, and Candace prefaced by saying, maybe there's a population element, excuse me, added to it in some way, would, would exclude Northern Nevada cities, or at least Reno. Because I kind of got the same feeling in reading it through, too, that there was some well-intended things here, but maybe too myopic, too targeted in one particular area.
Right. And, and I would, Councilwoman Sforza, you've asked me a couple of times before, you know, what-
before, you know, what the likelihood. I, I think this bill's got legs.
Oh, I do, too. That's why I think that what his intent is, is that it's, that redevelopment is targeted towards areas of higher unemployment blight and, and what, what, what he's trying to do is say, okay, if you're going to use redevelopment funds, tax dollars for these incentives, then you should be trying to hire within those areas that have, have the issues of redevelopment. And I, I do think that it does have legs. So I don't know if, if it, if we should oppose this. I think we need clarifications on, on what existing projects are and what happens if, if you offer, if, if no one locally can do that specific trade, would that be exempt, for example? I think Councilman Hashef brings up some good points there.
And also, what is, what is 15%? Is it 15% of the dollars of the value of the contract, or is it 15% of the work? You know, there's a, how you judge 15% of a project is, you know, if you have 15 floors, you could say that's, you know, one floor. Well, that's not the right math, but, but one, the bottom floor might be worth $20 million and the rest of them worth a million.
Right. And, and Councilman, I don't, I don't think the percentages relate to the project as much as they do to the, there's the 10% of the incentive that's withheld and then 15% of the employees.
15% of the employees of contractors, subcontractors, and vendors must be, reside in the redevelopment area. So for instance, I, I don't know where you'd get the suppliers. Would that apply to them all as a group or even separately? If I don't meet any one of those?
I think it's aggregated, all of those together.
But once the contractors or subcontractors, once the project is done, they're out of that aggregation. So then all you have is vendors and suppliers. Suppliers, by definition, probably don't live in the area, because they're being, you know, delivered hot dogs from California. So I don't know, I, I, I understand the intent here, but I'm not quite sure how you'd get there with that work.
And I agree with you. I could see a proliferation of storefronts, if the project were big enough, open up, so you'd qualify for that. But I still think that the, the intent is there, and I would not want to oppose this. I, I would at least want to, at the very least, monitor it till we find out more. If there's a recommendation to, to support it, that's fine, too, but I wouldn't want to oppose this.
Can we have a meeting with the, the bill sponsor, Cadence?
We can try. I, I met with his advisor today on another issue, so the, you know, I think we can meet with him or his representatives.
Yeah, I'm okay with monitoring it till we get some further clarification.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we monitor. Staff having a chance to meet with the sponsor or, or their staff to get further clarification.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Senate Bill 385.
Senate Bill 385 comes from the Senate Government Affairs Committee. This is the result of the SB 264 study from the interim, and this is what is referred to as the functional home rule bill. I, I know we've updated you on, on that progress through the interim and, and at the League of Cities Conference back in the summer. And so with that, staff would recommend a position of support.
Comments? Second, motion is second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Senate Joint Resolution 9 is sponsored by Senator Lee, and it proposes to amend the Nevada Constitution to require an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members elected to each House of the Legislature to decrease revenues or reserves, or mandate that new or different services be performed by a local government. This bill has actually been scheduled for, tentatively scheduled for a hearing on April 7, and staff is recommending a position of support.
Move to support?
Second.
Your motion is second. Further discussion?
The, the only issue with this is we're basically kind of saying it's okay for them to take, I mean, yeah, we're saying you need two-thirds, but at the same time, we're saying it's okay for them to take the revenue if they get two-thirds, right?
That's right.
But legally is okay for them to take the money. But right now, they could take it with 50%.
Councilman, I apologize for interrupting. I think this is intended to be a middle ground from the ballot question about diversion of local revenues and what's currently in law that they don't need the majority vote. I think it was.
I understand that. I just think we're saying that it's okay, then, to take those revenues. Because what we're saying is that, okay, you, we're, we're fine with it as long as you have two-thirds. I could see them coming back saying, hey, all the city supported this and, supported this position. They're just saying we need two-thirds to take away your revenues.
Then what would be an alternate course? Three-quarters?
I guess what you're saying is oppose it. Under no circumstances, you don't care if they have 100% of the vote, they can't take local revenue or mandate new services.
Correct. I mean, that's always been our, our position, is that they, I, I just think by, by supporting this, we're saying that it's okay for them to do that. Well, how could we possibly budget, do our own budgets? I mean, right now, we're in our own budgets for next year. We don't know what the legislature's going to do to us. And essentially, I think we're saying this is okay. After the voters said no, by the way.
I think we can support it with that caveat. This clearly makes it more difficult for them to come after local revenues, but I think we can support it with the caveat that we still support what the voters voted for.
Does this one have any quote-unquote legs?
Cristobal's a little fuzzy on this one.
Okay.
It does have a hearing.
I, I agree with Councilman Dorch. I mean, if we're going to support this, then we need to say that we, we don't support them taking away local revenues.
Or you could ask to amend the bill, say two-thirds vote and a vote of the affected local government.
I say we say, instead of this, we say they have to go out to a vote of the people, whether, whether it's okay for them to take certain pots of money. Did they have to, so we're mandating to them now, Councilman Dorch, what, what, what they're telling us.
I, I, I understand. I think we all here feel the same way. I, I'm only, I'm only saying if there's an opportunity to make it more difficult for them to come after local revenues, I'm for that. I mean, I still, I think our position is, is still the same, that we don't think they should come after any of the local revenues. But the feasibility or the probability of something like that coming out of the legislature, I think, is, is slim to none. So I think that this still makes it more difficult than it is today, although it's not where I want us to be. It still makes it more difficult than it is today, which is a positive for us.
Yeah, but it's not bulletproof, and that's, that's, that's what's being said. And so I think, as Councilman Sforroda said, we'd support this if the electorate supports it, which, which is tantamount to killing it anyway, because by the time they got that vote, it wouldn't happen.
But, but that's why we worked hard to get the ballot question, I believe, passed in every single county except for one. Was it one, Cadence?
I think it, I think it went on the ballot in 16 counties.
It went on the ballot in 16 counties, and the voters said, the voters said that the state should not be able to take away the, the local revenue.
I, I, I agree with you 100%.
So we're going against what the voters are saying.
I just think they are clearly ignoring that question. So, what this does is still makes it more difficult than it is today. That's all I'm saying. I, I think we can support it and still say, we still support what the, the voters voted for, but we'll support this because it, it does make it harder.
No, I think you've actually convinced me. So I'm going to withdraw my support for this. I think what they should do is, and I think this is what you're suggesting, is they should put this on the ballot, just like they want to do redistricting, and say, if the voters agree that a certain service or revenues should be taken for local government, let's face it, it's the balance of state budget. I mean, that's the purpose. That if the voters agree, then they can do that the next session, if it passes. But if it doesn't, then they don't have the authority to do it under any circumstances. Because that would be consistent with what the voters do.
Yep.
I'd support that. I think you're absolutely right.
I, I understand what you're saying, Councilman. The problem is, this did go out to a vote of the people. And the people here in Reno said no. And I think we should, we should stand by the wishes of, of the vote, of the people. And they want to propose these ballot questions to us, let's send it back up to them. Let the voters decide.
I agree. I mean, I'll support the motion, but I do think Senator Lee was trying to help. I, I, I really believe Senator Lee was trying to help us. And so I hate to oppose this bill that he's trying to put through when he was trying to help. I think he knows the situation down there, knows the direction, and he's just trying to provide some relief if he can. That's my opinion. I don't know if Cadence has a, other opinion on that or not.
Perhaps we would want to take a position of support if amended.
Councilman Assey?
Yeah, I'm sort of in the middle on this one, and this, this sort of shows why politics is politics. It also shows why it doesn't matter what we decide here, they don't really, it doesn't really matter what we think, whether we oppose or support, because we had this ballot measure. But he's trying something. And I think it's, it might be reaching too far to say that they'd have to come to the voters on everything they, that we do. To me, it's tantamount to, we are creatures of the state. I fully understand that. It's like we give money to the neighborhood advisory boards, we take that money away when we, when we need to. And we don't say we have to go to a vote of the people when we do that. The legislators have to have some sort of ability to balance their own budget and decide what money goes where. What I don't like is they also mandate that you do a service down there and then don't pay for it. That's the part that bothers them. So what does it really mean that we have to go to the vote of the people? If you take away a service, then you have to ask the local people whether they want to take that away. You know, if you give money to, to Washoe County and they provide a human services thing on their own, and you take that money away, if, if it's their money, it's their right to take the money, in my opinion. It's if they come and take money that we've already allocated or we get from our sources of revenue, that's the, that's the difference for me, is if the public here votes on a tax for streets and then they come take it away, that's problematic. But if they're giving money to the county or giving money to the city and they decide to not fund that anymore, I think that's their right to do. And they shouldn't have to ask the voters of Reno or Sparks or Las Vegas if that's okay to, to take it away.
See, and that's where I disagree. Because, I mean, right now, we have statutory property tax, sales tax, other fees that we collect, which are really established in statute. And we rely on that to provide fire and police and other essential services. That's what local government does. And if the voters say, don't take away our police and don't take away our firefighters, what gives the legislature, legislature the right to ignore that and take the money away?
And that's not necessarily what I was referring to, as I know they just give like grants out to the county. It does, they don't do it so much with city governments, but to the county. I know that statutorily, we have that, and that should be held, that we, we can't raise it, they shouldn't be able to let us lower it either. That's why I'm sort of on the fence. You can't tell the legislators they can't do anything up there. That past practices is what we complain about all the time. I think a two-thirds vote would certainly be better than a 50-50 vote. I do. And if we're going to pass something, I, I think they're, they're more willing, again, taking the middle ground, they're more willing to pass something like this, although it changes the constitution, it would have to pass twice.
We'll be depleted by then. I mean, just...
So I really don't think it matters what position we take on this.
We don't have to take a position.
So, we have a, excuse me, do we have a motion on the table to support it with, as, but amend it? Is that what you said, Councilman Hashef?
Yeah, well, my motion was to support it with the understanding that they would have to go to the vote of the people if they wanted to do either of these two things, decrease revenues or reserves, or mandate newer, different services without, you know, without funding it.
Okay. And do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you for your deliberation and direction on those items. Just a couple quick things to tell you about. I did want to note for the council that Assembly Joint Resolution 1, which is one of the League of Cities bills that has to do with the reset of depreciation for real property upon the transfer, sale, or conveyance of the property, has been scheduled for a hearing on April 5. So if any of you are interested in attending that hearing, it's in Legislative Operations.
Are we going to have our finance staff there? And Kevin, I think that's probably one where we would want the manager in, in finance to be at that hearing on depreciation. I mean, that's a huge issue for us up here in the north.
Okay, we lost that there.
That's the one the League's really sponsored on our behalf.
And then also, two of the bills that we've brought forth for your, for you to take a position on, AB 216, which is removing the cherry picking provision, as it's commonly known, within NRS 280. That is being heard this Friday at 7:30 a.m. And also, AB 278, which provides for the consolidation of fire departments. It's the metro model for fire. That is also being heard Friday at 7:30 a.m. And the council had previously taken a position of opposition to that bill. And then I would just note, good news, our hearing for Assembly Bill 360, that's the bill that Assemblyman Bobzine sponsored on our behalf. The hearing for that bill was on Monday. It went, I would characterize it very well, there was no opposition to our bill. And you'll recall that on a similar bill last, in the 2009 session, we had a great deal of opposition from the Realtors Association. They came to the table indicating that they only were seeking language clarifying the definition of residential property in the bill, and that with that, they would be in support. So, a bit of good news to report on one of our bills.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we go to agenda item A7, potential direction to staff regarding the Reno Fire Department Safer Grant application to the Department of Homeland Security Division Federal Emergency Management Agency. Ms. McKissick?
Good afternoon. For the record, Maureen McKissick, Grants and Federal Legislative Affairs. Staff is recommending that we continue this item until next Wednesday, April 6. We've been in conversations with the Department of Homeland Security, which is the granting agency. Staff is still developing the information that we believe council will need to make a decision. DHS is fine with a delay for one week, and based on their direction, we are asking for your approval to move this to next Wednesday.
Okay, we'll, we do have a public comment on that. Let me ask the gentleman if he wants to make his public comment now or wait until next Wednesday. Is Mr. Bill Winchester? Could you come forward, please?
Yes.
So you heard the recommendation? We haven't voted one way or the other yet, but you've heard the recommendation. Would you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till it comes up on, on Wednesday, the 6th?
If I'm able to, I'll actually speak now. And then if I need to as well, I'll also speak next week as well, if that's all right.
Okay, great. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by saying my name is Bill Winchester. I'm a Reno native, born in Washoe Med, renowned, UNR graduate, public servant, business owner, and gainfully employed. Thank you. This issue is not about politics. It's about what's doing best for the citizens and improving the city. With the rift at the beginning of last year, I was one of the first affected in the reduction in staffing and fire engines. Whether it's browned out, blacked out, whatever you may call it, the fact is, is there are still not public servants and public safety on the street. What I experienced was not fun or exciting. It was terrifying, and I would not wish that on my worst enemy. I ask you all to look past this room, look past those doors, look outside the doors and look into the hearts and eyes of your citizens of the city, and see what you can do to help improve the lives of the citizens that elected you. When you look out there, and you will see that most people are out there in this town, or what we call in the medical field, bleeding out. I think we all understand that phrase. They do not have much more to give. By you accepting this grant, it will give them hope and a little more security to feel safe. I ask people every day, what do you believe you pay taxes for? The majority of them say all the same thing. Education, police, fire, streets, public works, predominantly in that order. If we as this, if we as a city are not able to, to fund the basic necessities of the city off the tax revenues received, then by all means, seek assistance elsewhere. And I recommend you all for doing this. I have been around this town long enough to know that some of the hesitations is political. I have been around this town long enough to know that some of the hesitations is politically driven. We all know that. But I ask you as a taxpayer in the local area to put politics aside, do what is right for the citizens. We are all here to help each other in a time of need, and your citizens need this, just as much as you need them. The acceptance of this grant should not stop here. Look into the future, request more, bring back as many public servants as possible, may it be police, fire, public works, clerical, whomever. Make the city safer and a more enjoyable place to come visit and play. We all know that almost half of the fire engines and trucks are closed every day. In fact, the districts that are probably pay, that probably pay the most taxes are not even adequately protected as we speak tonight, whether that's Collin Ranch, Somerset, et cetera. That is, to me, an unacceptable, that is, to me, unacceptable as a taxpayer. A wise person once told me, don't step over dollars to pick up dimes. I find this saying is especially true today. Discuss this tonight. Commit to hire, obviously, next Wednesday, I apologize. Discuss this. Commit to hire back these firefighters. Commit to fill vacancies. Accept this grant, and make this town a place that people want to be a part of. Let us all be prudent and ethical for the needs of your city. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council. Councilwoman Sprouse.
Maureen, and just to address the public speaker, it's not that easy, because there's stipulations to this grant. And, and that's the issue and the challenge for the city council, and I think staff put these in the memo, is by accepting this grant, there's a lot of stipulations that we agree to, and just for the, so the public knows, one of those is that we can't lay off within the fire department for two years. The problem with that is, I think that violates our legal responsibility as council members. We have to legally balance the budget. We don't know what the legislature is going to do. They could take funding away from the city. We don't know, we have state mandated positions in other parts of the city, other than fire, that were required to hire, and by accepting this grant, we, we commit to not doing that. And I don't know how we can possibly do that, Maureen, without some modifications. But that being said, on the, the grant itself, what's the time period for the layoffs? I mean, how far does this go back, Maureen?
Actually, in the Safer Program Application Guidelines, the dates that they gave were January 1st, 2008, through September 17, 2010, so quite a wide window. Staff has been, and one of the reasons it was delayed until today, trying to obtain for the council information on whether or not there was any flexibility within those guidelines that would allow us to capture staff who were laid off on March 1, for instance. And there is. So that can be accommodated. So effectively, the dates have now become January 1, 2008, up until March 1, 2011.
And then, Maureen, if somebody, this is what I think needs to be clarified, too. If somebody retires out under this grant, do we have to, can we leave that position vacant, or do we have to hire a person?
Okay. The circumstances under which you could leave that position vacant would depend on whether or not we obtained the economic waiver. And, and the second page of the memo that was distributed on Monday delved into what that actually meant. And I can tell you that if you have obtained a waiver, if Reno successfully obtains one, the answer would be yes. We could leave that position open. However, if we had a safer grant in place, one of the safer funded positions would not be funded. In other words, they would reduce the safer award to balance what we were losing through attrition. That's if we get the waiver. If we don't get the waiver, then we don't have that option.
Okay, so, so let me make sure, because that's what I was unclear on, on the memo, because this grant, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stipulations here. So, okay, we, let's say we move forward, we accept the grant to bring back the 10. And then we have somebody retire out over the next two years. So are you saying we then, if we don't fill that position, we then have to pay back for a position that we brought back with the 10?
If we, if we, okay, there's one scenario, if we have a waiver, there's another scenario if we don't.
Okay, let's say we got the waiver.
If we got the waiver, yeah, and you had, you lost people through a military leave, retirement, whatever reason might occur. With the waiver, you would not have to backfill that position, but you would lose one safer funded position.
So, okay, but that's what I'm trying to, to understand.
So you don't have to refund the money?
Right.
But you, that fire person now has, because you can't fund him anymore?
Right.
You then have to let that person go. So it goes from 10 to 9?
Right.
And it would just keep getting whittled away if you had retirement.
That's correct. Thank you.
And then, the other issue, I think, is, I don't know if this is for legal staff or Kevin, but under our current fiscal constraints, I believe we're asking 7.5% cuts of, of all our employees, correct? Off the base pay. So if, if that wasn't agreed upon, if we don't get those agreed upon, I mean, if we don't get some of those concessions, then we have no other options but, but to lay off people. So, so I guess that's what my concern is, is that we don't, this is our, our situation now, is that we're asking everyone for 7.5. What happens if we accept this grant and then not get the 7.5? Then what are we left with? I mean, is that feasibly possible under our current economic situation?
My response to that would be that if we do not get the 7.5%, we won't have enough money to cover budget for next year, so therefore, we would have to lay off. And if we had to lay off the fire department, we'd be in violation of the grant.
That is correct. Rob Boney, Reno City Attorney's Office, the grant is, the one thing the grant is crystal clear on is you cannot lay off during the term of the grant, once the grant is accepted. If you lay off during the term of the grant, you would be in default of the grant.
But, but our current projections for next year is that, that we're looking at 7.5 million, I believe. And if we don't get that, then we have no other options except to riff. So how could we commit to the grant without knowing if that's going to take place first, I guess is my question?
I don't know if this helps or not, but DHS has a 90-day acceptance period. So if, if next Wednesday, council opted to accept the grant, we would have 90 days, they would generate the grant agreement and notification, you have 90 days to formally accept, which puts you into early July.
Because right now, we, we don't even have a contract with fire, it's expired. So, I mean, can't we get staff? Because I would love nothing more than, than to bring these 10 firefighters back. I mean, I, I think that's a win-win under this grant. However, I don't want to go out there and say we're going to do it, because we have our budget situation where we're asking everyone to take the 7.5%. So I think that's what I would like to see staff do, is, is see if we can, is, is have staff go back. And I think we need to have, I, I think staff, we've got to have a signed contract. We don't have a contract now, it's almost been a year, and I think that 7.5%, we're not going to be able to do anything unless we get that issue resolved first. So those are the, the couple of things that I think staff needs to work on before we can accept the grant.
And I think what, Ms. McKissick, if I may repeat what you're saying is, if we did accept it, we would have that intervening period to know whether that 7.5% is going to be realized or not. Isn't that what you were trying to say?
You would have 90, yes, you would have 90 days. The grant period begins the date that the council accepts it. The two-year period is triggered at that point.
Because I think Councilwoman Sprouse makes an excellent point about, we know what we need, are we going to be able to achieve it? We need some time to figure that out, and find out who's coming to the table to do what. So I understand. Councilman Ayosse, you're next.
Yes, two things. One, we're looking at actually a $23 million to a $31 million deficit next year. We're only asking for 7.5% being done through deductions in pay. So that's one thing we're going to be asking, is, is a 7.5% across the board, all city workers, to take a 7.5% cut in wages to balance our budget next year. The other thing is, the four that we brought back, the concessions made by the union only brought them back through July 1st. So if we did this agreement, then those four would be on permanently.
Actually, we, and I'm going to ask Michelle and Brent to come up, we did look at that, and how that could be accommodated.
Rob Boney, Reno City Attorney's Office, that would be something we would probably want to re-approach DHS with, and see if they would agree to, how they would like to see that situation handled, whether those people would be laid off prior to the acceptance of the grant, and see if they would extend that layoff period through whatever day those employees would be laid off, so that we would be in compliance with the IAF contract, civil service, and the best way to proceed with those four employees.
And I'm, I'm all for putting this off, because I think that there has to be some negotiations on this ahead of time. One would be, the other option would be ask the IFF, would they make those concessions permanent for those four? Which, or at least through the two-year period that this is being asked for. And also, can, I mean, I keep reading the papers, we're this close to getting a, a contract done. Maybe we say if we get a contract done by that time, we can accept this grant, too. I mean, that puts pressure on everyone to, to buckle down and get a contract finished.
Okay. Any further, Councilwoman Zedder?
Mr. Manager, we keep talking about the 7.5% that we'll be asking for the coming fiscal year's budget. When we prepared the current fiscal year's budget, we asked for certain concessions. And we've had to go back at least twice. How many times have we had to go back and recalculate this year's budget to stay in balance, because revenues dropped lower than were anticipated when the budget was prepared for the start of July 1?
That's happened four times over the past three years.
And how many times in this, wasn't it twice in this fiscal year, and twice in the prior?
This fiscal year, we managed the first reduction through staff alone. The second one, which we came back to in February, was to council. That was the first time we came to council.
But we had, you had to make revisions to the budget twice this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're talking about, I think we're, we're ingeniously talking about 7.5%. I would hope that that would be adequate, and that the budget that we're preparing for 11-12 will really carry us through the entire year. We have not experienced that, however, for the last two fiscal years. We've approved a balanced budget that we submitted to the state, and we've had to go back and make revisions to it, and deeper cuts, twice, two times in each of the prior fiscal years. To, to walk into the fiscal 11-12 budget with the hope that we won't have to do that may not pay off for us. The history isn't behind us that we've been able to live with the budget as presented at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do, is there another comment, Councilman?
Well, actually, I was going to ask Mr. Winchester, I was going to ask him up, he looked like he wanted to respond to something, so I was going to ask him a follow-up question. Is there anything else you wanted to say after these comments?
Again, counsel, thank you, Bill Winchester. Thank you very much for the dialogue. I'd just like to express the fact that I think we all understand that the fire department is basically running at a skeleton crew as it is. And I just ask that you ask yourselves, how deep are you willing to jeopardize the safety of the citizens? That's the question that I'd like to state. Also, the fact is that, the question I think you may want to ask is, if you do decide to say no, which I don't encourage, will you have the opportunity to come back in six months, six years, six days, and actually receive another award for a larger grant? So just with those thoughts in general, I'd like to make that known.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have another public comment? Mr. Markell, are you prepared for, to make a public comment?
Mark Markell, concerned Reno resident, I just want to echo this gentleman's saying, we need the fire department, they, they, they won't do it for free, so let's try, let's give the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a recommendation by staff to continue this. Any further discussion until the 6th? We have a motion?
Yeah, I just want a brief comment, because I think this does need to be said. I mean, the question was posed, how deep do you want to cut into public safety? But when we look at this safer grant and other options, that, that question also has to be asked by the fire union. I mean, concessions have to be made to keep people. It's just that simple. So that question needs to be asked to the union leadership as well, because in my opinion, you were terminated because they refused to make the necessary concessions. And to me, that wasn't fair. And that's not fair to this community, if firefighters have to go home, because nobody wants to take a pay cut. So that just had to be put on the record, I think.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ayosse.
Yeah, I think for, for the record, also for Wednesday, I, I'll talk about this on Wednesday, but I'm going to, I'll probably say the same thing. Unless we actually get to some agreement with the union, I don't know how we could accept this, quite honestly, unless we start getting to some concessions on both sides and coming, moving forward on, on negotiations. Because of all the stuff that's been said before, I mean, we're even looking, in three months, we're, we're going to be short $20 million. And this would tie our hands with the fire department for two years. And that, that's, what percent of our budget is the fire department? It's a, you know, at least on the, on just the payroll side of it, it's $20 million out of $72 million. So it's 25%, a little bit more than 25% of our whole budget. We wouldn't be able to look at it all. And I don't think that's fair to the other, I mean, the police are an important part, and municipal court's important, and, you know, we went through all this before.
Well, I'm hoping that there is, excuse me, a meeting scheduled prior to our meeting, and maybe we'll have some positive feedback from that meeting, that we are moving forward in the right direction jointly. And I, that, Councilman Ayosse, I'm glad you said that, because it's, it's a two-way street. There are two parties, takes two tangos, they say, and that's what we're doing right now. We, we need both, we need concessions on both sides, and that's what negotiations are about. So, any further comments? Councilman Sprouse.
Yeah, I think a couple of things, because I think the uncertainty over not having a contract, it's been, like I said, almost a year. We don't know, once that, that, I, I mean, that plays into it, too, because we don't know what the fiscal ramifications are going to be of, of a new contract when we get one. So I think that plays into part of this as well. And secondly, the overtime issue. I mean, right now, we're scheduled, I mean, again, we're, the, the, the grant, there's so many, it ties our hands on so many levels. I mean, right now, the, the fire department's scheduled to go $1 million over budget. Where does that come from? I mean, we don't have a blank check to write here. And I, I mean, this issue with the overtime, I, I've harped on this the last four to five years on, on this overtime issue, and that's where we are. If, if things can just go over budget, and I appreciate, Kevin, I know you're looking into it, and, and that's coming back to us, but quite frankly, that's some of the fear that I have on accepting this grant, is that how can you say we're taking away the council's ability to balance the budget when that's our only option? So I think we've got to have those things into play. I'm glad we have the, the 90-day window, because I, I think this grant overall is a good thing. We can bring people back. However, we have to come to terms on those other things before we can accept that grant. And, and I think the overtime issue as well, we've got to get our hands on that, because then that puts us over budget, then, then where do we go? And, and that's problematic.
Do we have a motion to continue this item until April 6th? Motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.